Well, let's open. I'll open up the meeting. Brian and Ed, are you guys ready?
Awesome.
I don't have an agenda in front of me, but before we begin, I just want to remind people about our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings, but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the select board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. Um, in terms of announcements, um, I just want to thank some people for the wonderful gathering yesterday down in the center of town and the walk through town.
Marty is now joining.
Dealing with racial inequality and some of the difficulties that we are experiencing in this country. So my first thank you goes to Ally Church for organizing this really in the matter of a few days with the power of social media. It seems like there was about 300 people there. And then I want to thank Daryl Williams, Christine Jones-Monahan, and Joe LaValle for speaking. There was also a gentleman from School Street who spoke, and I do not remember his name. Does anyone remember his name?
Jaleel Johnson.
Okay, Dr. Johnson. Yes, that's correct. All four speakers were really wonderful, and it was really a beautifully done event, and it was very powerful to be there. And I'm very proud that we did that, or I was proud to participate. I had nothing to do with the planning of it, but I really thank you. Joe, I think you're on the meeting, and Daryl, for your words. It was really great. So, thank you to everybody who showed up.
Diana, his name is Jalil Johnson.
Okay.
J A L I L. Wonderful.
Yeah, it was really wonderful. Really, really wonderful. So I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that. Ed, Brian, do any of you have any announcements?
Um, just that Town Hall will be opening tomorrow, our time. For those folks that absolutely have to go there, the time is 9:01. You must come in the side entrance. You will have your temperature taken. You must wear a mask, and only one person will be allowed in an office at a time. That was probably in Bob's message that just rang in the background. But we are still encouraging people to, to please continue, if at all possible, to do everything online or over the phone. Just because Town Hall is getting into the next phase of the governor, we still want to have as little exposure as possible for the public and for our employees. So, other than that, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
I'm good, Diane.
Okay, Ed, thank you. And Brian, thank you. And Chief Flaherty, thank you. And I don't know if Carrie's on the call tonight, but thank you for, you know, helping us move forward cautiously, responsibly into this next phase. We appreciate it. I'm trying to look at the, do we have Sean and Kim here yet? Kim said she's having trouble joining the meeting, but I just sent her the more recent invitation, so hopefully. Okay, so maybe she'll be on.
And I haven't heard back from Sean.
Um, just a couple of things I do want to say before we get started. First, if people could mute their microphones if they're not speaking, it sometimes leads to some background noise, as I know everybody knows in this world of Zoom meetings. But also, we've disabled the comments section tonight because, you know, this meeting, we have to have a record of this meeting, and that was, it was a lot of chatter off on the side. And it, I just worry about the recording of the contents of the meeting. So, um, that's been shut off. I'm wondering if maybe we should go through the warrant first, since Sean and Kim aren't here yet, and save the budget discussion for second?
Well, my question, of course, Diana, I'm, this is Betsy, I'm the annoying one. My questions relate to the old version of the warrant. I don't think I got an updated version of the warrant.
Okay, well.
So, as I ask my questions, I'll be referring to the old version.
Okay, is there any way we can send her a new version that she can have to look at so that we don't have to do it that way, Marlene?
Yeah, I'm doing that right now.
Yeah.
Does, does, do the other finance committee members need the new version?
I just.
Thank you.
It was the one that was sent to us yesterday, right, Marlene?
That was the budget that I sent you. I thought I had sent the warrant.
We don't have the warrant, but I do have the new budget.
Yeah, and I don't have, I didn't get the new warrant. I only got the new budget. Okay.
So would anybody like me to send them the warrant?
Yes, please send it to me, please. Also.
Marlene, I just sent it to him.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Kim?
Okay, are we ready to move forward, or do you guys need a few more minutes to get the warrant?
Mine has.
What's that?
Um, Sean Berry says the meeting won't let him in, but I'm gonna tell him I emailed the new meeting. You're into him.
Okay, so who needs to let Sean in?
I'm sending him the link right now.
I couldn't get the video. I had to actually call in.
Hi, Kim.
Hi, Kim.
Hi there, sorry I'm late.
For, um, for townspeople watching this, we apologize for all of this. It's a lot of people to try to bring in, um, you know, so I know that.
Can you see my screen with the warrant on it?
Yes.
I do.
Okay, is everybody ready? Can we move forward with this, going through the warrant?
Yeah, and this is the warrant that Marlene has put together in, this is as of June 5th.
Okay, so this.
Right, Marlene?
This includes the changes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so let's just go article by article. Article one is obviously just to vote to hold the elections. Now, question one has been added to that. Uh, any discussion on that? Article two, some of these are just standard. I'll just go through article by article, and if anybody has any questions, pipe in. But article two, anybody have any questions? Article three? Article four? Article five?
Slow down just a little bit, because I'm reading as I go to see if it's changed.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't get this earlier.
Okay.
Are you okay with article five?
Yep, I am.
Article six is the same as it was at the last meeting, I believe?
Let's see.
Article seven?
Um, can we go back to six?
Yes.
It's the same as last time? I thought that dollar amount went up.
Looks higher.
Let me look.
Article six hasn't changed, thirty-three thousand four sixty-six point eighty-three.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought that was the same.
At the beginning of this, a couple of weeks ago, it was actually much higher.
Right.
Oh, yeah, to start with, it was.
But last week, these were the numbers we had. Okay.
Yeah.
So, can I just go back to article five? We have not talked about an amount of money for five if we're going to do that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. We'll wait till the budget discussion to talk about that further. Okay.
Okay, so, article seven? I'll give people a second to scan it. Everybody good?
That's for twenty-five hundred and thirty-one dollars.
That's the prior year expenses?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Article eight?
Oh, special ed, yeah.
That's fifty-four thousand.
That's what, Marlene?
Fifty-four thousand five hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay, so that used to be article nine.
Yeah, the board had asked me to restructure.
Oh, yes, no, that's fine.
So I attempted to do that, and.
That's fine.
But I also understand that they, they may like to change them up some more as well.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'm just trying to make sure my numbers are in here. Okay? Okay, so article nine?
And that's for accounting services. And last week, I had reported out that it looked like we might be able to reduce that to forty thousand. And talking further with Malance and Heath, there was one, there's one more invoice. In addition to the invoice, another invoice we were expecting. So, that has increased, fifty-eight thousand one sixty-two. So I can tell you that we will be seeing another invoice for twenty-one hundred and five dollars for fiscal year nineteen. Malance for FY twenty, eighteen thousand. And of course, lavery, that lavery AP that does our AP warrants, there'll be another seventeen hundred and forty dollars for their services. So, we already have a deficit.
I thought we were talking about taking that out of free cash.
We, we did.
Yes.
The, right. And, and as I had said in the email yesterday that I sent out to the budget explaining all the adjustments that I had made, and certainly, you know, you can put that back to taxation, but it's just congestion to take it out of free cash.
Okay.
Yeah, at this point, we can't move that back to taxation, because we don't have any taxation room.
Right.
Right. So there's already a deficit for accounting services of thirty-six thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. We're looking at an additional twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars.
And Malance and Heath are comfortable with that number to get them through to the end of the year?
Yes, they are.
Okay, great.
Okay, anybody else have any questions about article nine? So article ten is the, we move on to the capital improvement planning articles, and that is the sewer project. Any questions? I mean, there's the two different articles.
And Diana, before we vote on those articles at the meeting, are you going to explain the difference between the two?
Of course.
Okay.
And, and, you know, explain the scope of the project.
Okay.
The importance and economic impact of the project.
Great, thanks.
So we'll have the engineer there, Betsy, as well, for the technical aspects of it, should people or anybody have those questions.
Okay, and I believe we're preparing a handout as well, right, that, that people can have to read ahead of time?
Yes.
Right, so we, we plan to have plenty of information about this.
Article ten is the straight borrowing. Article eleven is the debt exclusion.
Thank you.
So, since I believe it's our preference that the debt exclusion be the one that, that really works, and hopefully the town will agree with us, this is a small thing, but wouldn't we want to take that one up first?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, yeah, we want them both to pass at this point, though, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Because we can't.
Yeah.
Right, we would risk forfeiting the grant.
Right.
Right.
So, am I hearing that you'd like the debt exclusion first, and the straight borrowing to follow?
Yes, because if some, if for some reason that doesn't pass, then we're gonna have to do some more talking.
Okay.
Right.
And will the finance committee be sending me their recommendations for these articles?
Uh, yeah, we'll talk, um, we'll, we'll talk about that at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
So, so if I just might ask, so if both article passes, and then it fails at the ballot, the other one is in place?
Yes.
For the borrowing?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, any more questions on either of those sewer project articles? Uh, the next is, the article twelve is the, that is the repurposing, correct, Marlene, of the COA money?
Yes.
Renovation money?
The funds, yes, remaining from the three hundred and twenty-five thousand borrowing. And that is to do further renovations in the COA.
Okay, great. Will we make sure that there's someone there that can speak to that article? Like Jerry or someone from the COA?
I will talk to Jared, see if she can be available.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody have any questions on article twelve? Article thirteen is the Town Hall renovations article.
It's the repurposing, right?
Yes.
Yes.
It's repurposing funds and also raising and appropriating funds, and it does include language for borrowing.
Oh, it does.
It does.
Okay.
However, I have had a conversation with the, with the treasure collector, and she tells me that at this point, it would be, uh, there's not sufficient time remaining in this current fiscal year to go out to bid to borrow. Would have to occur in the next fiscal year.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask just a question about this, these two articles?
Yes.
Can we, um, offer, um, an explanation of what actually happened, where all this money is coming from? Not where it's coming from, but not all this money went to the project, is my understanding? That, that this is not simply a matter of cost overruns in the project?
I'd like to, I'd like to talk about that, if I may. I mean, there's, there's two things. The more I looked at this, I almost fell over when I heard four forty-eight. That was not the cost overrun.
No, I know, yeah.
If you look at the project from the beginning, you look at construction costs. So the construction cost at the beginning was around two point one, and when we finished, I believe we're under two point three, which I'm still trying to verify the numbers. So, we didn't overrun four forty-eight. Now, when we talk about funding, we were short funding at the beginning of the project. So we can't really say the project overran because we lacked the funding at the beginning. At the beginning of the project, we were told that we had sufficient fundings for this project. We come to find out that we did not. So, I think we're really talking about two different things. I think the cost overruns is, is around five or six percent when the numbers, when we look at the numbers, but I, I want to confirm those numbers. And then, when you, again, when you hear about the three or four hundred thousand, it's because we found out we did not have the three hundred and twenty-five at the beginning that we could use for the project. So, I think it's important that people understand there wasn't a very large cost overrun. It's just lack of funding. So I, I don't know if I'm explaining it correctly, but I, again, I think there's two things. Construction costs, I mean, what did it cost at the beginning of this project, estimated cost, and what was the actual cost at the end? And then the other, the other concern would be funding. How much did we actually have at the beginning, and how short were we at the end? So, I'd like to keep that in perspective. That's, that's all I gotta say on this.
If I could jump on that, thanks, Ed. It, it's a bit confusing, but, because Ed went in and checked, Diana went in and checked, I went in and checked, I met with Phil and Marlene, and they spoke to the architects and the contractor. To make a long story short, what Ed just said is, is absolutely correct. And I think we basically started off in the hole. We started off in the hole because of previous accounting errors, where we thought we had money, or we were told we had money to spend towards the project, and that money wasn't really there, if you know what I mean. So, and, and keep in mind that we had expenses to this project over many years, and because the project kept getting pushed out. So we had architectural fees, and we had different costs that weren't built into that ultimate two million dollar loan or, or amount with the one point nine, which is what it ultimately cost. There were other fees, and we were told we had the money for those fees, and we didn't. So, the one point nine got brought down because some of those expenses were already paid. Does that sound right, Ed? Did I, did I?
I'd like to also point out another fact, too. If at the beginning of the project, we did not have the sufficient funds, we would have gone back to town meeting, which we would have had. We would have had to get that money. There would have been more delay, and it probably, project would have cost even more at the end. So I mean, when we were short at the beginning, if we had got, we would have went back to the town and said, hey, we need another three hundred and twenty-five thousand, which would have added more confusion and cost, because after eight years, you got all these different funding sources, you got accounting issues. It's like, you know, so I think we're on the same boat. But I think it's got to be explained that there's two separate things here. It's construction costs and lack of funding.
Right, accounting errors, basically. Or maybe not accounting errors, but they misunderstood how certain funds could be spent. So I think that it's, we, yeah, we need to be prepared to answer to that. Townspeople will legitimately have questions about this, and I think that those explanations, you know, makes sense.
Twenty-five percent cost overrun. I just.
Right.
You know, I, I wanna, when we look at all the data on all this, it's not twenty-five percent.
Right.
We all, all three of us freaked out when in the.
We did.
After that meeting, as did some of the guests on the, on the, on the meeting. And, and rightfully so, because it just seemed exorbitant.
Right.
And it would have been exorbitant, but we, you know, we're, we're still getting through all the facts, and to Diana's point, at this point, we'll be able to speak to it. And keep in mind that it necessarily has anything to do with the money part of it, but we were on a schedule to get this done by, by this September, for, for like our fourth time pushing it out, right? We were, we were under the gun by the state building authority, you know, whatever their title is, to get this done on a certain timeframe. So anyways, take care of that cat, Ed.
Um, great. We, so yes, we will most certainly explain this.
Sean, did that help you?
Yeah, no, and I, you know, and I had some idea before when we talked about it, that was not entirely cost overruns, and, and that there were other funding issues at the beginning involved, or things where money got spent that we didn't thought was still there, or whatever exactly happened. I think it's, you know, I mean, it speaks to the overall problem, which is, it's hard to do things and initiate big projects and put together all these sort of complicated variations of funding sources when you don't have confidence that the numbers you have are accurate. And, you know, I think it just, that's the problem we're trying to solve, so.
Okay, everybody all set with that article at this point?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So next, I believe we move on to the CPA articles. Article fourteen, everybody okay with that? Article fif, article fifteen?
Yeah.
Article sixteen?
That the budget?
That's the budget.
Is it?
Okay.
So then hopefully we will have made enough progress, and, and we can continue going, that it's early enough in the evening, that we can then move on to the zoning bylaws. Article seventeen and eighteen, I assume everybody's okay?
Yeah.
Same with articles nineteen and twenty?
Yeah.
Twenty-two, twenty-three is just the general last.
Yeah.
So, you know, hopefully we'll get through all of them, but I think that we have them set up in a, in a way that allows us to accomplish the most in the time we do end up having.
Thank you, Diana. Marlene, is there, is there no article twenty-one? Do we just need to renumber these?
Yes, yes.
We went from twenty to twenty-two.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something, so.
Okay.
That's just a numbering thing, no, no big deal.
So, um, do we, so is everybody all set with the warrant? Does anybody want to discuss anything else?
Diana, I think on one, two, three, and four, I mean, they're just so typically normal that either we can blast through them, and I think that's pretty good. But if, if, if for the sake of time, if you guys would like to shrink time a little bit, I can put those four into what's called the consent agenda, which means we just read one, two, I just read one, two, three, and four as one vote. And if anyone has a reason to hold something out, we can certainly talk about that. But we can do four of those in one vote. I mean, who's gonna refuse accepting state money?
Right.
Uh, the only thing that might need a little explaining is just question one, but that should be pretty easy to do.
Right.
That might.
I'm all for that. I mean, you know, the, the point is to get through as much of this as possible.
And that, and that will allow it. So we would take the four, the first four, all in one as a consent agenda. I'll explain that to the townspeople as written in their warrant, and then one of you might just quickly read through the four of them. It will do with them in one vote.
Okay, I, I, I don't know how Ed and Brian feel. I'm fine with that. I mean, those are basically these sort of template housekeeping articles. They don't usually generate discussions, so doing them all at once might save us some time and let us get to ones that might have, you know, a little more.
It's not something we do all the time, but a lot of other towns and moderators, for the sake, and the, and the sake of time in this emergency situation, have just been using these because it's just pretty, it speeds it up so we can get as much accomplished in that evening as we can without making people feel uncomfortable. Thank you.
Okay. Brian, Ed, are you guys okay with that?
I'm on board with it, Diana.
Okay, Ed? Ed?
Yes, I'm fine. I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we'll just have the motions prepared accordingly? Marlene?
Okay.
Um, yeah, that's, that works out great.
Review them, right?
Pardon me?
Just as we reviewed them.
The first, we're gonna make one motion for the first four articles.
Right.
Yeah. But yes, in the same order, Marlene, to answer your question.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
And now, before we move off the town meeting warrant, the Commonwealth, there's new legislation for town meetings in light of the COVID crisis. We have to take action on that tonight? Uh, I, I didn't, I don't know that I, I don't have it in front of me, the, um, the language. I don't, Joe, do you want to explain to townspeople what this legislation allows us to do?
Yeah, the governor signed it the other day, and, and because every, every town, open town meeting, not representative town meeting, has been very concerned whether because of holding it outside, if there's rain, or what happens. So during the state of emergency, the governor has signed the, just the other day, two days ago, that towns can't operate at a ninety percent reduced rate for quorum. At first, they said it was ten percent quorum, but the real wording came in that it's, you, you, the select board has to seven day, at least seven days before a town meeting, at least approve that they accept allowing for up to a ninety percent reduction in quorum this one time during the state of emergency. And then the town clerk, I think, ten, within ten days from that. And then, the town clerk, I think 10, within 10 days from that vote, just lets the attorney general be aware of that. Then, at town meeting, if we, if we have a quorum or darn close to it, we don't, I don't need to invoke it. But if, if people, people feel uncomfortable and someone wants a quorum count, you know, we, we could pull it all the way to a 90% reduction. I don't believe we'll even have to, but you, you as a board of selectmen have to at least adopt that.
I'll make a motion that the board of selectmen adopt the policy released to the governor to hold the town meeting up to a 90% reduction. Did I word that right Lydia? Is that good enough?
I, I, the way I read it is I have to post, or the selectmen have to post a notice saying that they're going to take a vote on the reduction of the quorum for the town meeting. That notice has to be posted seven days before you take the vote. So, the notice would get posted tomorrow. The vote, the actual vote would be taken on your meeting just prior to town meeting, but everyone's got a week's notice that the vote's going to be taken. So, you're not going to actually take the vote to reduce the quorum until Tuesday night at 5 o'clock when you meet.
So, do we take a vote to post this notice at least?
Right, that you're going to, you're going to be taking a vote under this new legislation and then we'll make up something to, to post a notice.
And I believe that this meeting is the beginning of that posting of a notice.
It is, that's the first step.
Correct.
Okay, is there, is there a specific way we're supposed to word this, Marlene?
I didn't see anything.
I'm just looking at what town council had sent and, yeah, he's not specific just that, you know, pursuant to the legislation that was approved, the board of selectmen can...
So, maybe the motion is that we take a vote tonight that pursuant to that legislation, we intend to hold this vote at 5:00 PM on June 16th, to take a vote on this matter.
I don't, I don't, I don't know that you need a vote, you need to, it's like...
It just needs to be posted.
Posted, you're hosting a meeting, you're going to post this notice.
Okay.
So, notice that you'll be considering...
Right.
...in a vote.
Okay.
To, yes.
Right.
Okay.
The difference is, this has to be posted seven days prior to our meeting versus agenda items, which are two days prior to our meeting.
Correct.
So, all right, so, so we'll be posting that, we, and when I say we, I'm my camera, I'm looking at Lydia and Marlene. So, we'll be posting that tomorrow so that we cover our basis, so we're ready to go for next week when we have the town meeting. Okay, thank you.
So, and, and town meeting warrant will also be posted tomorrow.
That's correct, it will be, yes.
Okay.
You'll be able to come in tomorrow and, and so you're voting tonight to approve the warrant and then sign it tomorrow.
Okay. So, we're, we're set with the, the action we need to take regarding the legislation for the quorum restrictions and now we just need to have an actual vote on this town meeting warrant. So, I would need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to accept and approve the 2020 annual town meeting warrant as discussed this evening.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion's made and seconded, is there any more discussion?
Lydia, are you all set with that? Marlene, are you all set ladies?
What time are you coming, what time are you coming in, in the morning?
I can come in whenever, personally. I don't, I don't know about Ed and Diana.
I could come in around 8:35. I mean, that's pretty specific, just after 8:30.
Come in the side door, all right.
I will, I will, will you, will you be in and ready by then? That seems a little early.
I guess, I guess I will.
No, I, I just, well, let me rephrase that. I have to be back home by 10:00. So, I can come between 8:30 and 10:00. If you guys want to call me and tell me when to come, that's fine.
We usually open at 9:00.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be here at 8:30 Diana, but whatever works best.
But will it be ready, is my point?
Why don't we do 9:30? How's that?
9:30.
Lydia's office opens at 9:00, is that good? Marlene will give you an hour to whatever, if we have to do something.
Okay.
Is that good?
That works.
Yep, okay, fine, 9:30 it is.
Okay, Ed, is that sometime in the morning, you're good to roll on down there too? Ed, will you be able to get to town hall in the morning tomorrow at some point?
Yes, yes, I'll, I'll get there.
Okay. All right, sorry, I interrupted the motion, so.
Okay, so, the motion's made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and thank you everybody for all the hard work in getting to this point. So, the budget. Daryl, do you want to take over that discussion?
Sure, I can do that if you'd like. So, so it's been, so we'll go back to last week. We ended with, with about $71,000 and, well, actually 30, whatever, in the, in the levy limit. And there were a couple of things that were forgotten to put into the budget. One was the ambulance lease and the other was the paramedic equipment lease. So, after some discussions with Marlene and Chief Flaherty, we, we, we've got a proposal or an idea, Marlene's put, put some stuff together on, on that. So, we can take $20,000 out of ambulance surplus and use that, oh, and I did, obviously I talked to Phil about it too, I'm sorry Phil, so...
No problem.
We can take 20,000 out of ambulance surplus and use that towards the ambulance, the ambulance lease payment, which is $53,000, is that right?
Right, yep.
Yeah, $53,630.
Yeah, and then we'll take the remainder from, at this point, I think we have to take it from, from, well, we were going to take that from taxation, is that correct, Marlene?
Yes, $33,631.
Comes from taxation. And so, and then the paramedic equipment is $13,000. I think if I'm correct, Chief Flaherty, this is year four of five for that, so we've got one more year after that.
That is correct.
After this. So, we'll take the $13,000 for, our suggestion is to take the $13,000 for that out of free cash. So, if you, if you're looking at the budget now, you'll see on the budget recap, recap page, you'll see that all of a sudden, our levy limit, which was quite healthy last week, is now down to $4,626.40. Marlene and I have had a couple of conversations today about what happened there. I think I kind of understand it, but I'm going to let Marlene go through the, through the discussion. It has a lot to do with what we, what had, needed to be done for water sewer, or actually sewer, with the 75, putting $75,000 of revenue there for the budget. So, Marlene, do you want to walk people through what happened there?
Sure, I just, so Daryl, I think you had explained that last week, we were looking at $71,447 excess levy capacity. We, we took that 40,000, which we had believed at that time for accounting services, so that reduced it to $31,447. Since then, there was just a very small adjustment made to the town clerk's salary line, the 2% COLA that was, was added to the budget. There was a, a difference, I added $38.82 more. The assistant town clerk works more hours than, than what we had, what we had on record. So, that brought it to $31,409. Since then, so as you explained, I added the $33,631 to taxation. And the operating expenses for accounting increased from 40,000 to 58,162. I increased the...
But it moved to free cash.
And that was moved from taxation to free cash. That was just a suggestion that I made. And I increased sewer expense an additional $75,000 to cover a grant loan for USDA that the sewer department does anticipate applying for this year. And it was agreed that the sewer operations budget could, could cover that.
Okay, so we're still, we're back up to $38,000 on the levy limit?
No, we're not.
Well, then I'm missing something.
Yeah, and, and I've had a hard time figuring that out and, because something happened and, and Marlene can explain it, once we put that 75,000 in, it somehow hit the levy limit also. And Marlene, you can talk about that. You talk a little worry about that.
Right, so as I, yeah, I talked, had a conversation with, with Lori. The 75,000 that's added to the sewer expense, even though that is coming out of enterprise funds, it, it's still, when you look at the budget recap tab, the, the top half covers all your, your state, local receipts, other financing sources.
Yeah.
Under local receipts, you see enterprise fund receipts on line 10.
Yeah.
Then the bottom half, it adds all your operating expenses. It includes your enterprise fund operating expenses. So, it has to include those expenses, but it's offset by the receipts, the upper part, you know, the top part of that. So, you see a million, yeah, so we're looking at a total of $1,061,890 in, in enterprise fund receipts, which sufficiently covers the expenses. But it's still, it still impacts the excess levy capacity.
But shouldn't it be a wash?
Well...
The receipts and the expenses?
Right, so I, and so Daryl and I talked about this today, yeah, and it's still, I guess, what I need, I, I need to dig deeper into that. When I talked to Lori about it, she wanted to check the formulas. She got back to me, she said the formulas all appeared to be, be correct. So, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to talk to Pat Scalante tomorrow.
Well, yeah, I mean, regardless of whether, I mean, the formulas may in fact be doing it in the spreadsheet correctly, doing the math correctly, but I think the question is, why are, why are revenues that are being raised and expended through an enterprise fund having any impact...
Right.
...on the levy limit?
Exactly.
Taxation, that doesn't make sense.
Exactly.
That is the question, yes.
Right.
So, that's, that's the question I had about the levy limit. Is my version of the levy limit and yours, Marlene, are not the same dollar amount? So, can we get that sorted out by that?
Yeah, and, and Daryl and I had shared the same conversation earlier today.
Okay.
Right, and, and so my suggestion would be, we kind of leave it here going forward. I mean, maybe not vote on it, but let's wait and see what kind of an answer that Marlene gives. And I guess one of my questions for the finance committee is, you know, are we comfortable with a $4,600 levy limit? I personally am, because we're going, we're going to, we're coming back this fall anyway to fix whatever budget issues.
It just doesn't seem correct.
No, I agree, it doesn't seem correct, but if for some reason it is correct, are you okay with it?
Well...
And, and, and we've had lower levy limits, you know, I, I, you know, and that goes into, where do we want the levy limit, you know, is maybe 30, 30,000, 33,000 is too high? I, I don't know, that's why I posed the question.
I mean, your only way to change that, if that's accurate, which I don't know that it is, the only way to change it would be to take more money out of free cash, or to cut something.
Right, yeah.
I mean...
Yeah, I suggested to Daryl this afternoon, talking with the treasurer's office, that maybe we could take that $33,000 for the ambulance lease and, and take that out of free cash versus taxation.
Man, I do want to keep some kind of placeholder in taxation for the ongoing cost of the ambulance. So, yes, we could do that, I'd rather not do that, just because next year, we're going to need to pay that dollar amount again, at least.
Well, and, and, and so, so Sean, so do you guys think that 4,600 is too low to go to town meeting with the levy limit?
Well, I mean, I mean, we've probably done less than that before, I'm sure, so...
Yeah.
Technically, no.
Right.
Right, and, and, and like I said, and I'm sorry to repeat myself, we're coming back this fall, so we could certainly adjust it at the next meeting if need be. Hopefully, between now and next Tuesday and Marlene's chat with Pat Scalante, that we'll, we'll figure out what we all, we, we all think that there's an error in here, we just don't not know, we don't know where it is, so. Correct?
Yes, I mean, I, I guess, you know, Marlene, referring back to your email of the other day, you talked about since last Tuesday's meeting, here's what's changed on the budget. You said you reduced town admin expenses by 10,000, you reduced cable TV by 24,000, and you reduced legal expenses by 5,000. So, shouldn't the town administrator and the reduction in legal expenses put those less in that?
I did, I did that, I did that, so because actually we were looking at a negative number...
Exactly.
...this levy capacity number before I made those changes. And it was after, it was after adding the $33,631 to taxation for the ambulance lease and the 75,000 to sewer, that put the excess levy capacity into a negative number.
Okay, so when you say you reduced the, the town administrator budget and the legal expenses, do we not pay a retainer for legal expenses?
Do we not what?
Don't we pay a retainer for legal expenses?
No.
Oh, all right. Okay, so that can actually be reduced by $5,000 and that's not...
I, I looked at what we've been spending the last, last few years, so I was comfortable...
I think we increased it last year and maybe, or the year before, for sure.
Okay, all right.
That line has been increasing, so, you know, and that may have been related to specific things.
Right, okay.
Right.
And what about the town administrator budget? Where, where did, what were you imagining would cost $10,000 less?
Well, I felt that we were, the accountant's budget is adequately funded and, you know, we have Malanson, he's working with, with the town now that we should not need $14,000 for professional consulting, so I reduced that. That was, 14,000 was... That was, fourteen thousand was added to the town administrator's expense. Um, actually, the last two years, funds have been.
So what is that dollar amount in that line item now?
I'm sorry, what is what?
What is the dollar amount for professional consulting now?
In the town administrator's expense?
Yeah.
Um, that is four thousand dollars.
So.
Four thousand dollars.
So if we needed, uh, temporary help in the, in any of the offices, would we be able to hi, I mean, like the treasurer collector office or?
Well, that's in the expense line, um, so normally if for for added administrative support, we come out of the salary. So what I could do is I could still charge it to the salary line and then we would just make an adjustment at the end of the year to make sure that money was set aside and expensed.
Yeah, that money was put in there specifically to hold it out for expenses that we had a feeling were coming.
Okay.
Right.
Right. So and and we we went through that fourteen thousand this year.
Yeah, I bet we did.
Yeah.
That fourteen thousand is now a negative thirty six thousand.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But now we have a contract with somebody.
Right, I was gonna say.
Is not gonna need help.
Right, right.
So the the accountant's line item covers Melonson Heath and Lavery AP.
Yeah, the seventy two thousand.
Correct.
Okay. So, in theory, if we figure out what's triggering this seventy five thousand dollars to offset the levy limit and that gets fixed, then.
I'm taking about forty eight thousand. Yeah.
Right. Okay.
That's what I.
Then we can have a discussion, you know, I guess the question is, you know, finance committee, you know, and certainly the board is welcome, do we want to plan on a meeting prior to next Tuesday to review, to review this again?
Well, I would like to hear, I would like to hear the explanation and be able to ask questions about that. So if if that means I should just attend a meeting with Pat Scalante, I'll do that. But the rest of the finance committee might be interested or maybe not.
No, absolutely, I'd love to.
I would definitely be interested.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so what what's reasonable? Do we want to try to set something up next Monday? Or do we, or or this Thursday?
I would prefer this Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah. There's. For me.
Yep, that works.
Um, and it can be anytime, okay, for me, I think Daryl, I don't know what people's time limits are.
Yeah.
I'm pretty flexible as well.
Anytime is fine with me.
Okay, so that that's three anytimes, Daryl?
I can probably make something work, um, Sean, what are you thinking?
Um, yeah, I have to check, but probably.
Okay, so Marlene, is it possible for you to see if Pat Scalante is available at some point on Thursday to meet with all of us?
I will, I will be glad to ask her.
Okay. I'm not sure about my colleagues, but I'll be able to, if they can't make it, I'll be able to represent the board.
Right, I think it would be good for everyone to hear the explanation, so.
Right, but it depends on people's, yeah, work schedules and what have you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, that that meeting will have to be posted before, whatever time you set up on Thursday, it's gotta be posted tomorrow before that time.
Okay.
Well, why don't you, Lydia, why don't you, why don't you, can you post this for several different times on Thursday? Just as a placeholder?
I can.
You know, post for like nine AM and then we'll figure it out. Or whatever time you go to the office.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we post, how about ten o'clock? Can we post for ten AM on Thursday?
Okay.
Ten AM on Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then if it needs to be later, we'll make it later.
Well, well, what what other times do you want me to post?
Uh, at at this point, it's up to Pat Scalante and what would work for for her.
I'm sending her an email right now.
Okay.
I mean, we could post for ten and we could post for one o'clock, just, you know, to see. Is during the day okay with with everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that's fine.
I I will do my best.
Okay. And so while we're waiting to hear from Pat, um, let's, is is everybody, you know, okay with what was decided on the ambulance side of things?
Yes. Yeah, that's fine.
All right, and just know, and and I'll let, and and certainly Chief Flaherty can talk to this, but the discussion I had with him and also I talked to, uh, um, Steve Vaughn about it. You know, one of the things you can't count on having X amount of dollars every year in the ambulance surplus to pay the ambulance, I mean, the hope is there's at least twenty thousand surplus next year, but you can't guarantee that there is, because it's dependent on the number of calls and, you know, things like that. Chief, do you want to talk about that?
Sure, so this year is actually gonna be a very good year. Um, I'm not sure if you guys have the updated numbers. We're slated to actually crest a hundred thousand dollars in revenue on the ambulance for the first time ever. Um, but one place that we've kind of gone to a few times is that ambulance surplus to pay for other items. And one of the things we have to keep in mind is, um, talking with Steve, the idea is that we're supposed to have almost two years' worth of operating in case we have a bad year and we have to dip into it to cover the operating. Um, currently EMS across the country is down because people aren't going to hospitals as often. Um, so next year, very well, you know, we we might only bring in eighty with an operating of seventy three. Um, and if we gotta start dipping into that, the money can run out fairly quickly. So I know a lot of other places, Amherst is currently slated to lose a million in ambulance revenue from lack of calls. So we really don't know at this point, so we can't necessarily count on that twenty thousand or twenty five thousand every year. We certainly like to be able to to help, but it just can't be accounted for moving forward for the other five years at least.
I I mean, I think.
I mean, I think it's reasonable to, you know, expect, there's obviously gonna be fluctuations. What, Sean?
No, I was gonna say, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think we kind of appreciate that and expect it. I mean, you know, I think that anything could happen and we could lose, you know, we could have less revenue in one year or another. But, I mean, that's true of lots of things, really, except for local receipts, uh, are pretty stable, you know, but other than that. So, I mean, we always have to make those adjustments potentially. I think Amherst is a really unique situation. They they've been depopulated by probably, what, twenty thousand people?
Right.
Aren't there anymore, so, I mean, like, that's a kind of an extreme scenario. But, you know, certainly we could see fluctuations, we understand that.
It is, I mean, this this year is one of the higher years, um, I mean, we've we've typically been in the mid nineties. So if you take that as our as our average, you know, you're, and you say that you're gonna take twenty right off the top, basically, the ambulance didn't profit anything for that particular year. Um, and with things continuing to increase in costs and things like that, uh, you know, medical supplies, we're we're certainly doing more calls at the ALS level, um, but we also don't collect everything that we transport. Medicare only pays three seventy five, so a three thousand dollar ambulance bill, the town ends up writing off a lot, off a lot of ambulance billing at the end of a year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, right.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think I I was just gonna say the same thing, that, you know, we're gonna experience fluctuations every year. Um, and I don't think that we're, we are in the same boat as Amherst necessarily with the the impact of COVID being as extreme on us as it would be on a service over there, so.
No.
I I wouldn't expect to see anything more than average fluctuations.
That we're, we have already seen in the three months of COVID that our call volume is down about three to five percent. So it's a small number, but depending on what we're able to bring in for receipts, it it can ultimately make a little bit of a difference moving forward. That's, we just want to make sure that we get it out, that we can't, we can't necessarily count on it, we hope to be able to. We just want to get that out early because obviously this is year two of the ambulance lease and we don't want to get behind moving forward for the other five years.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Understood.
Uh, finance committee, any other questions about that particular topic?
Nope.
No, I'm all set.
Nope.
And and I did, um, we put the ambulance lease in underneath the D, in the DPW, um.
Yeah, I saw that.
Line, you know, just so it stays kind of with the other lease. And included in that lease is also the paramedic lease, so next year, hopefully, we won't forget it. At least next year will be the last year with the paramedic stuff.
Okay.
So, um, all right, so, so I guess, Marlene, were there, oh, any other budget issues that we had to talk about? Oh, well, we we did put a placeholder in the, in the war, in the warrant for putting some money in stabilization. We haven't talked about that tonight. Do you want to talk about it tonight or do you want to wait until after, wait till Thursday to talk about it once we hopefully get whatever corrections need to be made, made to the spreadsheet?
Well, my understanding is that right now the free cash bound, before we put anything in stabilization, we have ninety three thousand one hundred and twenty one in free cash.
Correct.
So we would need to decide on Thursday what if, well, we have to, we have to do something with it because we can't put it in finance reserve. We could just let it go, but whatever.
We could let it go, we could take a portion of it and it could go into stabilization, um.
We could, we could fund the town clerk's election budget.
Yeah, we could do that.
Why would we do that, Lydia?
We could do that in the fall.
I'm gonna already be in deficit by the fall.
We promise we'll bail you out, Lydia.
You're gonna be fine, Lydia.
We won't let them take you away.
No, no, we won't. So, so I guess.
I mean, it's a difficult question, Daryl, because if you wind up needing the money.
Yeah.
You know, you're you're asking, well, when is free cash gonna be certified versus?
Two thirds.
Two thirds majority to get it out.
Yeah.
Right.
And the, and the, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't know the answer to either one of those questions, so, you know.
No.
I don't either, and I I think we have some time until Thursday to 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 think about it, but certainly we'll we'll need to make a decision on Thursday. I mean, my hope is Thursday, we're gonna, we're gonna find, you know, some of that money, you know, whatever happened to that seventy five thousand is, that that caused the levy limit to go down, we'll we'll get that fixed. So if we get the levy limit back up, you know.
Daryl, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Just, if we, either way, I guess, so if we find out that that number is accurate, and I'm still trying to figure out why it would be, um, versus if we, uh, don't.
Yeah.
Are we gonna do anything about it one way or another?
Personally, I would say, I I'm thinking no, but.
I mean, yeah, that's kind of what I'm thinking too, so, you know.
I think one of the things and and my fallback position is always, well, we're gonna read, we're gonna have another town meeting this fall to make corrections once we know what the state numbers are, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Right.
If we have to fix it then, we'll fix it then.
Right.
But, you know, going to that point, we've got some.
I mean, it only really matters if you need the thirty thousand dollars, that, you know what I mean, like, that's when it's really gonna matter.
I know, but I just prefer to understand it.
Oh, no, no, I think we should understand it. I'm just, uh, that, I'm only asking, yeah.
Yeah, no, you're right.
If we need to do anything, I mean, certainly we want to understand it because I, um, because I don't understand why, uh, expenses not raised by taxation would have an impact.
On taxation.
On taxation, exactly, but.
Right.
Um.
I mean, Daryl, this, just, uh, you know, off the top of my head right now in advance of Thursday, I would put a good chunk of that free cash balance into stabilization because I think that two years ago, maybe it was, um, when Brian had to give a speech in front of the town about the money we were taking out of stabilization, we did make a promise to address that.
Yeah.
We did, yep.
We did, yeah, and it's just harder to get it out once.
I know.
Once you get it in and.
I know, but townspeople that day coughed it up because they knew they had to.
Right, right, and it may be that whatever happens with the state and the budget, we may, we may need to get it back this fall.
Yep. Yep.
Right, but but I, but hopping on that, though, I I think, and you guys probably would agree too, though, so sometimes it's it's good to have it be not readily avail, not readily available in the sense that, you know, if it's so urgent that we, we, the finance and board of selectmen need to go back to the town for the money.
Yeah.
Right, you know what I mean, that, I mean, like we, like we did a couple of years ago, Daryl, after after we had our Worcester visit, then then I I think that lets the townspeople know, hey, these guys, something's really happening or they wouldn't be coming here asking for it, you know what I mean? So.
Right, right, I agree with you, Brian, and we have, we have three hundred and something thousand dollars that we can move around without a town meeting.
Right.
Right, right.
So I'm tempted to put it in stabilization and try to live up to that previous commitment.
Yeah, even if we had to go back and take it out in the fall.
Yep.
And then if everything works out better than we hope and we don't, I mean, there's, we may not actually have to come back in the fall. I mean, it's not a foregone.
Right, right.
I mean, without knowing the state aid numbers, it's really hard to know.
Yeah, right.
Right, and 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 we don't know, there may be some effect on, well, and we, you know, we've essentially level funded everybody except the school, which is a level of service and 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 there may be some needs determined between now and then that have to be met with some of those budgets. Like, we know we gotta fix Lydia's budget, the clerk's.
And finance reserve, so we can do that.
Yep, absolutely.
Right.
Okay.
But can I just type in?
So, do you guys want to take ninety three thousand and put it in stabilization?
Well, let's hear what Phil was gonna say something, I think, Daryl.
No, I just wanna, I I just wanted to say that, you know, with Daryl, Daryl's comment there that said, you know, maybe we won't have to come back in the fall. Well, you're gonna have to come back in the fall because there's gonna be two easements that need to be addressed during that fall meeting for the mass road grant. So you're gonna have to have a town meeting.
Okay.
Okay. What are the easements? Oh, is that for the Route Five project?
Yes, for the pumping stations.
Yep.
I thought they were already on the warrant.
No.
No, we took, we took them off.
Okay, all right.
Phil, is there, Phil, is there any reason you couldn't have them on there in case the meeting went quite well?
Uh, uh, we're not, we're not, uh.
You're not ready for it?
Yeah, there's still work that needs to be done.
Okay, yeah, we still need the specifics and and the exact, um, uh, measurements and things like that, I believe.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right.
Okay. So, uh, Finance Committee, Selectmen, is there anything else that we need to talk about in this budget right now?
Um, I just wanted to, um, ask John Robert if he wanted to talk about, um, the school safety, um, the PPE. You said that you would, um, mention something to us tonight about it?
Oh, yes.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me? I just under myself.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, yeah. So we recently, uh, notified by the Department of Education about, uh, what we're gonna be looking at for, um, PPE, personal protective equipment. Uh, and beyond just that, looking at what we need for this effective circuit, we can advise purchase of a three-month supply. So, uh, right now, we're getting an idea of what that will cost. Um, but, um, a while back, when I talked about returning the monies that were appropriated for school safety improvements. Uh, that was pre-covid nineteen, uh, and, uh, I think I was asked by the Finance Committee at the time, there's other things that we could be spending it on. And, uh, quite frankly, this does fall under that, uh, that purpose, uh, though. Um, you know, it was not seen at the time of the town meeting a year ago, but quite frankly, it seems to be that it might make sense for us to hold on to the balance of that money, which is approximately about sixty thousand dollars, so we know what we need to purchase. Um, for schools in the fall, and it may be beyond just, um, masks and, uh, those type of things. It may be getting dividers and those, we don't know exactly yet, we're still in the process of trying to put all that together.
Okay.
Just my thought that maybe we want to hold off and turn it on. Other places together at this point, and it's already distributed for the purposes of school safety. So I think it just needs to make sense for us to to hold off on that.
Um, you know, obviously, you're gonna need those things. Well, don't we have some money that will be able to, um, be reimbursed for some of these types of expenses?
I do believe that we are entitled to some reimbursement, uh, I don't think it really matters where the funds are coming from, as long as we keep track. So there's a chance that, you know, we could be reimbursed, I believe seventy-five percent, perhaps even, well, at this point, I believe it's seventy-five percent. Perhaps the fire chief can speak more to that as far as the reimbursement goes. But this is a readily available funding source at this point that, uh, and we'd like to start trying to order those materials because there's gonna be a lot, there's gonna be a wait period, all the schools across the state are gonna be competing to order this material.
Beyond the state. Yeah. Does, do either Bob or Marlene want to speak to that, um, at all, or? Okay, um.
I I'd be glad to.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, you know, as 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 long as the 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 items qualify for either the, uh, funding, federal funding that MEMA is making available, that's a seventy-five percent reimbursable. Uh, I don't know if they're calling it a grant, um, then we also have a a federal relief coronavirus relief package that we had, um, received notification of. Um, and and there's about two hundred and eighty-nine thousand that, um, could potentially come to come to Hatfield.
Which is direct funding and not reimbursable.
That, yeah, right, so we have to put an estimated budget together and Chief Elected Officer has to complete that, uh, online form. Is, I can send that to to John and if any of that equipment or PPE qualifies, certainly, we can can submit for that.
But we we all been, we haven't keeping track, Marlene, what we spent.
I thought we had a discussion that there was gonna be one line that all of these things were paid out of to keep track of it, Chief.
I don't know if Bob's still on, Diana, so there is, that that is true, there is one line for that we are tracked, that Bob is tracking. Um, for the townwide offices and staffs, if you will. Uh, anything that's related to covid nineteen that might be reimbursable, the various departments are supposed to supply that to the emergency management director.
And I spoke to the account today, and and there is a covid nineteen, uh, expense and revenue account that has been set up.
Some of the purchases by the school goes back to March.
So. I didn't hear that, John.
Brian, can I, Brian, can I speak to that?
Sure, oh, who's that, Carrie?
Yeah.
Where are you at? Oh, there you go.
Um, that. The reimbursement, because I don't know why Bob's not on anymore, but the reimbursement, yes, it's up to seventy-five percent refunded. The twenty-five percent is responsible by the department itself, whoever's purchasing X amount of dollars worth of items. And all of those receipts are supposed to be going, they get put through as a normal bill schedule from the department, but then the receipts need to go to the fire chief so that he or the emergency manager, so he can keep track of it. And right now, he only has about twenty-seven hundred dollars worth of receipts. So if the school or anybody else has receipts specific to covid, they need to get those receipts to him because right now, we're only, we've only been talking about twenty-seven hundred dollars. That's gonna be refunded back. And there's been lots of emails about it.
Yeah, no, Carrie, we we have given the receipts back from what we've spent so far, but we've held back until we had the list, which we just got last week, so. Now we're really ready to purchase.
My my only concern with that money and and Lydia, correct me if I'm wrong, but that money that was that was voted on last year was specific to certain things being done in the school, and I'm not so sure that we can just say that we're gonna spend it on covid-related items. Whereas I think we should be getting the covid-related items out of the two hundred and eighty-nine thousand if Marlene can account for X amount of dollars, be specific to PPE purposes for the school in that survey, or we wait on the reimbursement part of it from MEMA.
Right.
Is my personal opinion, I I mean, we, that that article, that money that was put forward was voted on for certain reasons at town floor. I'm not so sure we can just go spending it on anything else that's not part of that article.
Right.
I could be wrong.
I think John referred to that.
That's why I'm bringing it forward to the to the Select Board and the, um, Finance Committee, because I'm not sure either, quite honestly. I know that was brought up in a previous meeting, asked if there's other things that we could spend it on, uh, but, uh, so I'm I'm just asking the question at this point.
So, yeah, that was for security apparatus, security apparatuses. Um, so you you could repurpose the money if it's for something similar. So in other words, it's for the school and it's something similar.
Well, I think John's thinking outside the box, which I I appreciate as he always does. Um, but I I think Carrie might be right, if we said this is for alarm system and this is for a phone system and this is for smoke detector, you know, all that stuff, the kitchen stuff, I'm not, I'm not sure, well, I I would agree, we we, I would hope we could do it. But I would agree that, given the town meeting form of government, the way we have to transfer funds, we just can't say, hang on to it and buy all your PPE stuff. So I I don't know who can answer that question, I don't know, given the circumstances, if that's something that, um, you know, the, um, you know, how they're changing it and and, uh, rules and regulations, if you will, or or giving a little more flexibility, I don't know if that's a question that can go if if our town accountant would know it or or.
But Brian, it sounds like it might, if there's two hundred and ninety or two or some thousand dollar side, um, then we may be all set, I I can't anticipate having to spend that much money as far as we're talking about. That that is money, is that money, can I ask if that money's gonna be available prior to July first?
And John, you faded out, what was your question?
The money that Carrie spoke to, is that available as of now or is that after July first?
Well, part of it is the federal, I don't want to speak for Marlene because she knows a lot more about it than I do, but part part of the funding that we're we're applying for, the the large federal amount of money, the couple hundred grand. We're still in the midst of submitting or getting the paperwork out, which has to be done in the next few days, if I'm not mistaken, or by next week or something. Uh, but it's, I think it's, I think it's approved up to that amount as long as we submit the paperwork as to what we're gonna spend it on, so. But I I can't imagine any monies coming in before July first, honestly, but I don't, I don't know that.
Right, so we have to provide an estimate for at least FY twenty expenses. And then that threshold, you know, that that cap is the cap, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, we don't have to spend up to that amount.
Yes, we do.
This school year, we can apply for, you know, other expenses in FY twenty-one.
We will get to, uh, we will get to the amount that we would need for the first three months is what we're being advised to purchase as soon as possible. So we're working, we'll get that to, that goes to Carrie, Carrie, or to Bob?
No, get, I would get for that, no, I would give those to Marlene because that's gonna be.
Yeah, and I, John, I think what's a li might be a little bit confusing is is Bob and what we've been working on so far and what you've been dictated to do is from DSE. And we've been working with state funds, what Marlene's, you know, the other, the CARES Act or whatever it's being called, the the two hundred and eighty-nine grand is is from the feds. So there, you know, we just have to, we just have to move it through the right path, that's all.
So the bottom line, if I understand correctly, is that, um, we we should not repurpose the money in this article because it's really not within the spirit of what the money was appropriated for. And we have two other funding mechanisms to purchase these needed materials for the school.
That's what it sounds like.
So, yeah, okay, just to, just to put this all all in a nutshell.
Diana, I.
But I think it. I'm so sick of online meetings, yeah, so, um, but it, yes, you need to get that information to Marlene as soon as possible. And and I would also recommend, uh, um, you know, communicate with Chief Larity as the emergency planner in town. Because he has a part in this as well. Marlene, sorry.
No, that's all right, I'm sorry, so I just wanted to say, if it's okay, I would still like to look into seeing whether we could repurpose that. It was sixty-two thousand, right, John?
Oh, yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, I'd like to still look.
I wasn't aware of, I was not aware of all of the money that that the money that was available for the federal government, so we may be fine. Um, so, but, okay.
But, Marlene, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys already voted on the warrant, if we were gonna repurpose it, you'd have to put it on the warrant, right?
Yes, that is right, yeah.
Marty.
Is now exiting.
Either way, we'll go back to free cash.
Could it be done in the fall or no?
Sure. But gotta get paid for.
John, you said you need this in the first three months of the fiscal year?
They're they're suggesting that we purchase our materials now for the first three months of school.
The first.
Yeah, right, and they've given us a a list of what we would need. And we are, we just received it this week and we are in the process of putting it, finding out what exactly it will cost because, um, you know, we we need to purchase from, you know, we're looking to purchase this, so I know that, um, we're in the process of getting those quotes, but, um, and I do, so. Yeah, I'll work, I'll work with the, I'll work with Carrie and I'll work with Marlene and Carrie and, uh, and Bob, and we'll we'll get it all together.
Pascalante is available at ten o'clock Thursday morning.
Babe, does that work, Finance Committee?
Uh, hang on, Darrell.
Yes, that's fine.
Brian, you can make it.
That's fine.
Kim?
Kim, fine for me, yep.
Great, thank you.
Okay, this will be an online meeting?
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I mean, I'll be fine with that.
So it's Finance, Board of Selectmen with the accountant.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. Diane shaking her head, yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
All right, we're still waiting for Sean.
Yeah, I'm waiting for my, uh, calendar to open, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Apparently.
Can I, Brian and Diana.
All my resources.
Yes, Darrell.
Yes, Carrie.
Or, oh.
Diana, if I can just wait, make one more comment in regards to that two eighty-nine, just so everybody, um, understands. If it's anything like the PVPC monies that I receive through the Board of Health, it's it's federal money. So it means once that survey is submitted, we probably should see the money within about one to two weeks. If it wants approved fully.
Okay.
So hopefully, we won't, we'll have that money before the next fiscal year, if it's anything like the PVPC one, because that money came within days of us finishing that survey. Just so that people have that, knowing that idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have another meeting at that time, Darrell, but that's all right.
Well, do you wanna, you wanna try and do it at one o'clock? Is one o'clock any better?
Um, I, no, I don't think so, I, um, no, I just scheduled a meeting for one, so.
Okay.
It's, um, that's all right, I can talk to you afterwards.
I mean, we have, you have a quorum.
Yeah, we'll have quorum, yeah.
Well, we won't have Sean.
That's fine, I'll, I could call, Darrell, I could talk to you when you're done.
We do, we do love having you there, Sean.
I'm free till from like eleven to noon.
Yeah, we'll talk it, we can talk after that, so.
Okay.
Okay, so ten o'clock, so Lydia, you'll post us?
Yeah.
Ten o'clock for Thursday.
Yes, is there a reason? We don't want to do it at eleven if Sean?
Oh, I didn't think of that, I don't know, would eleven work for you, Sean?
Yeah, it would.
Well, we'd have to get back to.
We'd have to find out about Pat, though, so, you know.
Right.
Okay.
So I don't care, do what, do what, whatever Pat can do, if we can do eleven, great, we can do ten, fine.
If if you guys are okay, why don't we, for Lydia's purposes, unless it's, we can wait till tomorrow, let's plan on ten for this call, but we know we're asking Pat if she can actually do whatever, push it out an hour, push it out an hour on her end till eleven.
Yeah.
That's, okay.
And was eleven good for everyone else on the Finance Committee, Diane, Kim?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, it's just as bad as ten.
At least they're consistent, Darrell.
Yes, yeah, that's right.
Leave that.
No, it'll be good, so, all right.
Okay, um.
So I think, uh, sorry, Diana, Finance Committee, is there anything else that we need to discuss tonight or can?
Usually, we put down whether we recommend articles on the warrant. And after looking at them, I don't see anything on the warrant that I wouldn't recommend.
Um, that's a good ques, good question. Uh, do we, Finance Committee, do we want to vote on that tonight?
Yeah, I think we should go through it real quick.
Okay, so.
I I can't think of anything I don't want to recommend, but there might be things we just don't want to take any action on.
Okay, so. One, let's see.
Hey, I don't have it in front of me, hang on a second, I gotta.
Well, it's only on financial articles, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just, it depends on how you interpret financial, I guess, too.
So question one, oh, no, that's question one, no, no, Article two, three and four, those are all grants and stuff, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna do those, right?
We recommend that.
Yeah. Okay, and then Article five is the free cash to stabilization, since I would assume we would go along with that.
Yes, and we're seeking ninety-three thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, Article six is the, uh, the deficits in twenty.
Yep. Yes.
Article seven is, uh, prior year, that's prior year expenses, oh, no, Article six is fixing past accounting issues.
Yeah.
And Article seven is fiscal year. And Article 7 is fiscal year '20 deficits.
Yeah.
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 As is Article 8, which is the special ed one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, uh. What's Article 9?
9 is the accounting, isn't it?
Oh.
9 is the accounting.
9 is, that's the 58,000.
Yeah.
Right.
And that.
And that's free cash, right? We agree on that.
That is free cash.
Yeah.
And then we were gonna switch the order of 10 and 11, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we'll.
We're gonna recommend them both, though, right?
We're gonna recommend them both, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then 12 is, oh, repurposing.
Repurposing is fine.
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, 13 is the rate is, is, is the loan for the money that needed to pay for the accounting error and overruns.
Well, right now, we're not gonna be able to, to have a number for a loan. Well, we, we know, so if it's, we're looking, if we're looking at 200, covering 200,000 in, in a borrow, it would be 20,000 over 10 years in principal, interest, we have no way of knowing. But Edwina did explain to me she wouldn't be able to put this out, put the borrowing out to bid before July 1.
But we, we can approve it, right?
Um.
But we don't know the amount?
Yeah, without the amount.
Why don't, I thought we knew the amount. Why don't we know the amount?
Well, Ed was talking earlier. He still wants to look at, at some numbers. He and I were going over numbers last week.
Okay.
Well.
Marlene, do you think we'll have that or at least a rough idea come Thursday?
Oh, yes.
When we're all meeting anyways, okay.
I, I will make sure we do.
Yeah.
We can talk about that Thursday.
Yeah, we gotta get that out.
Yeah, because, yeah.
But I mean, regardless of what the numbers are, the.
I would assume we would approve it.
Right, Diana, right. Well, Diana and I, I think are gonna say the same thing because regardless, Lydia's gotta get this posted tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're gonna, isn't the discussion about whether you're recommending the action? I mean.
Yeah.
Right. We already went through the articles already, so.
Right.
Right. Okay, so we would be.
Regardless of how the final numbers shake out.
Yeah. And then Article 14 and 15, that's community preservation, that deals with money.
We don't usually talk about those, though, do we?
Um, I don't know. I mean, we can really recommend them. They're not, they're.
Right.
I was, I would think townspeople would like to know the Finance Committee's stand on those.
Yeah. I, I would assume we would recommend them.
I mean, 14 is really just boilerplate stuff, mostly.
Yeah, and, and 15 is the fix, so, of last year's boilerplate, so.
Right.
All right.
And then 16 is the budget.
I approve in a big way.
Okay, and then none of the others.
So did you just?
Sorry, Diana, go ahead.
I'm not clear on 14 and 15. Are you putting a recommendation or not putting anything?
I would.
Yeah, I think we're recommending them.
Yes, we're recommending them.
I, I would hope so. I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would hope that you would, yeah, yes.
So essentially Articles 1 or 2 through 16, we're recommending.
Correct.
And none of the others. Oh. Now, how about, how about like the commis, the, the projects, the community preservation articles? Article 19 and 20.
Um, do we have to?
Well.
I mean, the issue I have with it is it's not a decision I got to participate in. It's really, it's really a different committee that's managing that, right?
Yes.
Yeah. But, I mean, the question about it in my mind is like, it does have a potential impact, right?
Of course it does, yes.
Because.
I guard.
Well, after we spend the $36,438, and we, we create the public pavilion at the Smith Academy Park, where does the money come from to maintain said pavilion?
Yes.
Perfectly good question.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I don't see a plan for that, so I'm assuming the town's gonna be responsible for that or not in the end, but either way.
Right.
That's an impact.
Yeah. Yeah, most of these projects hit us that way.
And we all know where it ends up.
I can look in past what you've done in the past.
Yes, that would be great, Lydia. And I'm not saying that I don't recommend it, but I'm not sure we have to comment on every article, do we? That, in the past, we have withheld comment.
Yeah.
And, you know, this, this. I mean, the CP. The Finance Committee oversees, really. Pardon?
I said you were cutting out. I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, nothing, it's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it's a reasonable question. I mean, and we've run into this before and we've actually discussed this before. Like, okay, it's great, you're building it. Who's gonna take care of it? Someone's gonna come back to us next year and say, hey, I need X amount of dollars to take care of this building, structure, et cetera. So. It's a reasonable thing to think about, so. Anyway.
Well, that's the kind of stuff that should be discussed on town floor.
Yes. Yeah. So we can, we, we can just let them, you know.
I think we should just not comment.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm okay with that, too. It's.
And if people ask us, we can, you know, because Betsy, you are right, we're not really part of any decision-making process of that. Nobody comes and talks to us about.
No. An individual voter, you know?
Right.
Right, it's separate money. It's not, not money.
Well, that's what, that's what I was saying when I was fading out, that CPA funds are really outside the scope of the budget that the Finance Committee exactly.
Right.
You know, has purview over, so.
Right.
I think in this, even though it's technically a money article, I think that there could be an argument made that you don't need to weigh in on this necessarily.
Well, and if that's true, it's probably the same as true for Articles 14 and 15 or whatever, that, you know, maybe no, no comment on, on those either. So.
Well, I mean, I don't care, but those are, those are really like requirements, you know what I mean, like.
Right.
They're accounting requirements.
Right, exactly. And I recommend that, but the, but 19 and 20, that's really up to the individual voter. And I, as a committee, I don't.
Right.
I don't wanna weigh in on.
Okay. All right, so Diane and Kim, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And so we don't do anything with the general bylaws or anything else, so I don't see anything else that we need to. So. So what I, I would entertain a motion that the Finance Committee approves of Articles 1, 2 through 16, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, still moved.
Okay, and moved in second, all in, any more discussion?
No.
Hearing, hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay? Didn't hear anybody? Okay. All right, so, so there you go, Marlene. You can add that to the warrant.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other business that the Finance Committee needs to do tonight? If, if not, we will, we will meet on, on Thursday at hopefully 11:00, but um, in 10 or 11 on Thursday.
Okay, well, wait for the invitation.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have fun at work, Daryl.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
Bye. Kim?
Okay, Marlene, I believe, I, I don't have an agenda, but I believe that those were the only items we needed to take care of tonight. Marlene? Brian, anybody, anybody there?
We're here. I wonder if Marlene dropped because the Finance Committee dropped, which would be a good signal that we had nothing else we had to discuss, Diane. I honestly, I. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we did, to be honest with you.
No, I don't think.
It was set up as a meeting, yeah, it was a setup with a meeting as the, with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, so.
Okay, okay, I, Ed, are you all set?
We're all set.
Okay, I will take a motion. Yes.
Hello? I just was wondering how the clean, how did the deep cleaning and disaffected at the Town Hall go? Is it all set?
It was supposed, well, Lydia's on from, as a Town Hall employee, but I know that it started yesterday and was, I believe, was gonna wrap up today, Phil. I don't know.
Okay, I was just, you know, I just wanted to make sure that it's all set for tomorrow's opening.
I, my, my office, my office was done and the treasurer's office was done, but I, I can't say what else was done.
Okay, but I'm sure that they completed it today, so.
I didn't, they weren't there today. Great.
Oh, so maybe they did it all yesterday then, so I'll check with, I'll check with Carrie and Bob.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, if there's nothing else.
Thanks for checking. Enjoy the rest of your vacation.
To adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is now exiting.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Diana. Thanks, Ed.